This is the agenda of the regular board of the Trustee, Bishop Burnham, Cook County, Illinois. Today is March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. This time I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Trustee Cap?
Here.
Trustee Hodges?
Here.
Trustee Garcia? Trustee Greer?
Here.
Trustee Richardson?
Here.
Trustee Claybrook?
Here.
You have a form president.
And to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands onation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any approvals or corrections of minutes of the board lead as it comes February twenty-eight, twenty, twenty twenty-three? Any corrections to the minutes? There are no corrections to the minutes, I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes of February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
The motion is on the floor by trustee Claybrook, and could we have a second, please?
A second.
Second by trustee Hodges, could I take the roll?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
That's them.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed. Before we open the meeting up to the public, if you have anything to address to the board, if you stand out with your name, you're leaving the best in the board, please keep your comment brief and last name. So the second time. I will ask for a motion to open the meeting to the public.
I motion open the meeting to the public.
That's a motion on the floor by trustee Hodges, could we have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Richardson, could I take the roll?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed, the meeting is now open to the public for public comment. Any public comment?
Andrew Johnson, I'd just like to know, what is the latest that you've heard about the train that be on Burnham Avenue, you know, uh, down there where, you know, sometimes be on the track half hour, maybe longer or whatever. But it's three or four times a week, I mean, it's not, you know, once a month, you know, that. So do, what is the latest that they say that, you know, now I'm fortunate that I'm on the south side of it, so I can, I don't get, have to wait on it like that. But, uh, well, sometimes I do, but most of the time I don't. So what, what did they say about that? I mean, do they, they act like that's, they can't do anything about it, that's satisfactory, they are doing something about it, you know, but, oh, you know, what is that?
Well, again, the trains are regulated by the federal government, um, doesn't have anything to do with the municipality. There was, uh, a time a few years ago, maybe ten or fifteen years ago, where we used to cite them, you know, five hundred dollar per occurrence, and they went to court, and the court ruled in their favor, and they said that what they was doing was part of interstate commerce. So that is, um, so that's over, I will, I will start on that. But taking a step further, uh, there is a plan, uh, under the bill of bridge at that location.
Yeah.
There would probably be another five or six years before it happened to be on this one, so.
Wow. I mean, it, alright.
Are there any other public comments? There are no public comments, I'll ask for a motion to close the meeting to the public.
Make a motion to close the meeting to the public.
You need a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Richardson, first made by trustee Claybrook, could I take the roll, please?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed, we need to go to the public, so we thank everyone for coming this evening, so welcome. Um, spring is right around the corner, um, so, uh, we need, maybe need to start cleaning up and, and, uh, get a lot of litter, bottles and paper and stuff that's on the pathways and way, so, so. We do our best, and I know you didn't throw it down there, and I did, I, I see it up. Need everybody to help, and should not walk by every day and leave it there, you know, so. Yeah, and we would really appreciate that.
You missed my announcement earlier, but I saw two ravines today on the side yard.
Oh, let, maybe that's a good sign.
That's, that's usually a real good sign.
And Homewood will start picking up yard waste April the first, or if you got grass or, uh, I mean, weed and same, that's capital, be breaking up the yard from, uh, from the winter. I mean, April first, Homewood will start picking that up. And last thing I have is that we've had, well, you know, the Hyundai's and the Kia's are being stolen, I mean, all over, everywhere I spoke, and so Kia has been the most stolen car, uh, that's on the market recently. So I've been hearing about other towns that want something to help the residents, so I instructed, uh, them about personnel, uh, police department to look and put them there. And, and he did, and he got back with me, so, uh, we were able to, uh, they're gonna send us a six to four, and it's currently locked for the Kia and Hyundai, the six to four. And, uh, so we will, um, pass those out, they'll have to go through the police department, they'll have to be registered. I mean, the pile had to be registered to the building around that, we went on to living ground, so, you know, it would be qualified by that, so. Hope that would be a benefit, uh, to the residents. They also have a new update for Kia, some new software, I'm supposed to make it as, uh, vulnerable to be stolen, so. I think we have a copy of that somewhere, we'll probably post it on the website if we can do that, you know, how to check with our, I mean, IT person to see if they can, uh, I mean, they can put that up. Thank you. I'm Clark Lewis.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Just a reminder that, um, early voting starts March twentieth, which is following Monday, at Kellyman City Library.
Okay, Clark Lewis, um, come to educate and help safety and welfare, trustee Ray.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming out this evening. We received, uh, my first two reports I'm going to give, I've given before, but they're very, very important, and it's good to know they can. Uh, we received a letter from the chief of police, Nick Clements, and it said, through the ninety-seven fund, our police department was granted five new portable radios, at a total of seven thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. These five new portable radios will increase the safety of our offices, enhance communication with our dispatch centers, and for the protection of our citizens, at no cost to the village of Burnham. And number two, the village of Burnham was awarded a grant to come an ed from the Metropolitan Mayor's office. We, we were awarded three thousand and five hundred dollars for their, uh, for their safety, for their, with safety, sorry. We were awarded three thousand five hundred dollars for their, uh, initiative, with safety being a top priority.
And that for the scheme, mom?
Yes. These guns will happen as citizens purchase radar, speed signs. These signs will be posted throughout the village, starting with Burnham Avenue, Torrance Avenue, and State Street. These are the most traveled roadways in our village. Signs will show speed, it will give warning messages, and it will, it will collect data of speed traffic. So those are just very two excellent things that happen, grants that are happening every minute.
And the signs did come in today.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful. Anyone interested in taking CPR classes, please sign up at our, at our recessment window. Once we have enough people for a full class, we will move forward, and everyone that signed up on the list, showed that they're interested, we will be notifying you. So CPR, that's very important, who knows, you may save your own life, you may save a family's life, it's very important. And you can get certified, if you pass the test, and I'm sure you will. Senate Bill two oh eight was signed into law by our governor. Uh, it's paid leave for all workers in the state of Illinois. The bill will go into effect January the first, twenty twenty-four, and it will give everyone a chance, you can take this paid leave for anything that you want, for a birthday, for, um, going to a patient. It's a chance of giving people opportunities to do things, uh, you will get, uh, five days per year. So that starts January the first, twenty twenty-four. And for those who like to go to the Taste of Chicago, September the eighth through the tenth will be the Taste of Chicago this year. It's after Labor Day, and it's going to be in Grant Park. As you know, COVID vaccine, COVID vaccination clinic, one thirty-nine twenty-five South, that's right. This will be Saturday, it will be from ten to four. There will be COVID testing, flu shots. Uh, there will be, uh, people there, assistance, they're giving, uh, taking application for your gas, and electric bill, for your water assistance, and they, and there will be someone from home winter, winterization assistance. One hundred dollar gift card will be given to the people that are taking the vaccination. That's, and will, they will be given out just as long as they last. I don't know if you ever heard, but Buffalo Wild Wings has a lawsuit against them, for those who like to go to Buffalo Wild, Buffalo Wild Wings. It's because this person has, is suing them because of false advertising. They said that the, um, the wings are deep fried from a chicken breast, and it's, and, and it's somewhat like chicken nuggets. So Buffalo Wild Wing is being sued. Lunchables are becoming a part of the national school lunch program, and these Lunchables will be a little different than the ones that you buy in the store. They're supposed to be better. So starting, uh, this coming school year, Lunchables will become a part of the national school program. Amvets, post number forty-three, will be having a spring craft fair, March the twelfth, from ten to three. One forty thirty-two Torrance Avenue. They will have a variety of, uh, crafts, uh, they, they normally sell a lot of little nice snack type of foods, and this is a pleasant way of supporting our Amvets, so that will be Sunday from ten to three, post number.
We missed this, we missed that.
Oh, okay. Sorry, that's, it's over. But, uh, please support our businesses in our, in our village, it's very important. We have some very nice villages, we have some very nice businesses in our village, I mean, uh, that are, so please support businesses that are in our village, and for the ones that are coming soon, we have, uh, Domino's coming soon, and, uh, several other new, uh, events, businesses, so please support those. But let's work, all work together to keep our village safe. If you see something, say something. If a, if a crime is in progress, or someone's life is in jeopardy, please call nine-one-one. Otherwise, if you have a concern with the, um, with our police department, you can dial the nine emergency number, seven oh eight, eight nine one, two one two two. Keep your doors locked, and be very observant of your surroundings. Not that you're being noticed, but that you're being concerned, and would like to keep yourself and others safe in your neighborhood, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Greer, for your report and that information, of the works and buildings, trustee Claybrook.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve on the hire of William Kinnison for the Public Works Department.
Okay, so is there any question from the board, or would you like to ask Mr. Kinnison some questions, uh? Do you have any question?
Wait, um, where do you live, where do you currently live?
I live on Green Bay, one forty-two sixteen Green Bay.
Oh, so you're in Burnham?
Yes. He's not missing that place.
Okay. And, and where did you work before?
I worked for, you for, the name of it's T-Force now, it was UPS freight, T-Force bought UPS freight. A lot, a lot of us got laid off. They said freight is down all over, so.
How long ago did you get laid off?
Um, it's been about a month now, in the February, but I remember it's been going on nine years.
And, um, are you gonna be full-time?
Say it again.
Full-time, you're gonna be full-time in public work?
Oh, yes, I will be full-time in public work, yes, yes.
Welcome.
Yeah, are there any other questions?
Yes. Are, are, are you easily influenced by others?
No. I may, I've learned to kind of make my own mind up on that, take, take responsibility for that. And I'm, I'm familiar with snow plowing, I'm familiar with public's work, work, you know, familiar with trucks, you know, so. I got a taste of a lot of that, you know, I worked with the state for a season, and we did a lot of public's work, work, in the state of Illinois.
Any other question? You may be seated, so, we're gonna ask them. Make a motion for the second last, a big question from him, and put it on the board, and we, we're gonna approve both of them.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve on the hire of John Noakowski for the Public Works Department.
So does the board have any question? John?
A couple of the same questions that were being put in.
Uh, here in Burnham, it's my home floor, a hundred thirty-eight.
Any other question?
I was just gonna say, and where did you work before this?
S.C. Johnson.
Any other point?
You've been the center for full-time?
I believe so.
My question is, what attracted you to work for Public Works?
Uh, moving to the village of Burnham, if I'm gonna live there, I might as well work for them, I love that.
Well, how long have you been in Burnham?
I moved here January first of this year.
What is one of your greatest strengths?
One of my greatest strengths, uh, customer service.
So, uh, you have experience using the snow plows in the areas of?
Not necessarily in snow plowing, I do carry a Class ACL, I've been around a lot of heavy equipment, operated heavy equipment, medics tools, hand tools, things of that nature.
Do you mind taking directions when necessary, when you have to? That'd be such a problem.
No, I do what as I'm told.
Any other question from the board? Uh, thank you.
I make a motion to approve on the hire of William Kinnison for the Public Works Department.
I'll second it.
Okay. I make a motion to approve on the hire of William Kinnison for the Public Works Department. Also, I make a motion to approve on the hire of John Noakowski for the Public Works Department.
So there's a motion on the floor by trustee Claybrook, uh, to approve both of these appointments for the Public Works Department, do we have a second?
No, second.
Second by trustee Cap, could I take the roll?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed, too late now, you had, you know.
That's all I have.
Just like I'm mad, you know. Congratulations. Trustee Garcia, all the brothers are at the last.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Consideration, discussion on consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve resolution, a resolution for Cook County intergovernmental agreement, Burnham Avenue grade separation for engineering costs, railroad review agreement, Burnham Avenue one hundred and thirty-sixth street, two hundred and forty-third street, twenty, uh, street, section twenty-three, B U R G S dash zero one dash E G, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash R dash zero zero one, a resolution for authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the county of Cook, a bond chartering corporate of the state of Illinois, acting by and through its Department of Transportation and Highways in the village of Burnham, and municipal corporation at the state of Illinois.
Uh, the city trustee, I said, we need a motion, you may be involved in, you know, to approve the government.
Well, I haven't made the motion yet, I'm just. So, do you want me to make the motion, or? So make a motion to approve a resol, a resolution for Cook County to governmental agreement, Burnham Avenue grade separation for engineering cost, railroad review agreement, Burnham Avenue one hundred and thirty-sixth street to one hundred and forty-third street, section twenty-three dash B U R G S dash zero one dash E G, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash R dash zero zero one, a resolution for authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the county of Cook, a bond chartering corporate of the state of Illinois, acting by and through its Department of Transportation and Highways in the village of Burnham.
Okay, so there's a, the motion on the floor by trustee Garcia to approve this resolution for, for the bond rate separation, do we have a second?
A second.
And before I take the roll, Mr. Johnson, this is another part of that complete process, and after you get, and I even wanted to get that completed, so this is, this is an intergovernment agreement between the bodies that's gonna be involved in that process, I see.
And, and also the, the cost is not coming through us, right? It's, you know, it's being paid through a grant.
Thank you.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action?
Sorry. Trustee Cap?
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Discussion on consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve resolution for Torrance Avenue, multi-use path Robinson Engineering Agreement, section twenty-one, dash zero 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 four one, dash zero zero, dash BT, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash R, dash zero zero two, a resolution for authorizing the execution of an agreement between the village of Burnham, Robinson Engineering and the state of Illinois Department of Transportation Station, in order to construct a multi-use path along Torrance Avenue connecting to the Pelseth Trail with bike and pedestrian facilities located in the village of Burnham.
Now, this would be, uh, we had admitted as being a, a draw to Burnham to a grant from Cook County, they granted us two hundred fifty-six thousand dollars, at no cost to the village, and I think it'd be a nice thing for our community, we're gonna do everything we can to make it as safe and accessible as possible, uh, for the residents and for the people, uh, so. I think we just always work, uh, continuously trying to bring resources to Burnham, work with other government providers, we have a connection, and we can just, uh, just work with those people and get things to Burnham, and that's what we've been doing, and that's what we're doing. Yeah.
So make a motion to approve a resolution for Torrance Avenue multi-use path Robinson Engineering Agreement, section twenty-one, dash zero zero four one, dash zero zero, dash BT, resolution number twenty twenty-three, dash R, dash zero zero two, a resolution for authorizing the execution of an agreement between the village of Burnham, Robinson Engineering and the state of Illinois Department of Transportation, in order to construct a, a multi-use path along Torrance Avenue connecting the Pelseth Trail with bike and pedestrian facilities.
So there's a motion on the floor by trustee Garcia to approve this agreement. And Robinson and, uh, contract and resolution, and, uh, do we have a second, please?
Second.
Could I take the roll?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
I motion passed, and weather permitting, this project should be done by June thirtieth or before, with weather permitting. I guess it'll be nice development for the village of Burnham, yes.
Discussion on consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve a resolution for a governmental agreement, and grant acceptance led service line inventory grant program, CSFA number five three two, dash six zero, dash three zero one seven, state award number three zero one seven, dash three eight eight nine one, resolution number twenty twenty-three, dash R, dash zero zero three, zero zero three, a resolution for authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental grant agreement between the state of Illinois and Illinois Environmental Protection Agency in the village of Burnham.
So we're gonna believe in it.
There's four?
Yeah.
And so would you make a motion to, uh, to, uh?
To make a motion to approve a resolution for intergovernmental agreement and grant acceptance led service line inventory grant program, CSFA number five three two, dash zero six, dash three zero one seven, state award number three zero one seven, dash three eight eight nine one, resolution number twenty twenty-three, dash R, dash zero zero three, a resolution for authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental grant agreement between the state of Illinois, Illinois Environmental Protection Agency in the village of Burnham.
And before we, uh, see on that, this is another grant, one to, for four thousand dollars, we can do the, uh, the, that's, that's like, and, um, so, hello, Noah has passed a law that all the lead lines have to be removed from the drinking water from the home, the whole state, every city, every town throughout the state, and this survey has to be done before, um, I mean, before April fifteenth the next year, about April fourteenth of twenty twenty-four.
What's the timeline from them as far as to get it, the work done by, how many years to begin this?
Well, we don't know, we don't have the money for us, and we'll try to get another grant for that, so we're gonna be submitting, uh, this week, um, I've instructed the engineer to look into that.
Do you have any idea what they think?
Nothing yet, so this is just the grant to be able to complete the, uh, the inventory. Once we have the inventory, we'll, um, you know, we'll have a better, um, understanding of what kind of costs we're looking at to replace the, the services, and then the I A P A has different programs, and then we can look into depending on, you know, what our needs are, and we can develop a multi-year plan to complete all the replacements.
We have no idea what the timeline is gonna be.
Um, they haven't set a date yet, um, it will come in the next couple of years, but as of right now, um, they're just trying to get everybody, all the communities, um, to start thinking about, you know, making a plan for, for the replacement.
It'll be more than a couple of years.
I believe we have about eleven hundred forty-five accounts or something like that, so we've got about five hundred that's, uh, that actually need to be, uh, probably changed out, so. Need a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Claybrook, could I take the roll?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Discussion on consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve the resolutions for twenty twenty-three C E G capital improvement, roadway resurfacing, one hundred and thirty-first, two hundred and forty-third, Green Bay and Mackinac Avenue, Community Development Block Grant, uh, resolution number twenty twenty-three, dash R, dash zero zero four, the resolution for authorizing the execution of the Cook County Community Development Block Grant, twenty twenty-three program year.
And, and before you make the motion, uh, I believe we, um, applied for two hundred thousand dollars for, for that program, two hundred thousand dollars, so, uh, we don't know, it'll be next spring before we find out whether it's actually awarded or not, just for the sake of the people that, I understand, the Indian community block grant farms are low-modest, I mean, cars have to use them in, uh, in the neighborhoods that qualify for them, so anybody that lives on the west side of Torrance does not qualify for community block grant farm, so it has to be on the east side to have, to meet Torrance Avenue. Now, the M F T farm, we can use those universally all over, so, we probably use more M F T farms on the west side of Torrance, community block grant, happy to use those on the east side of Torrance, so, and, you know, we've been working here quite a while, so we're very familiar with the process, and, I mean, how that works, and, you know, plans to guide that, and make sure we don't get penalized in any way, shape, or fashion.
And it's our roadway surface?
Yeah, 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 it's free for surf, yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 street with surf, yeah, yeah, so. Okay. I'll see you, Trustee Garcia.
So make a motion to approve resolution for twenty twenty-three C D B G capital improvement, roadway resurfacing, one hundred and forty-first, two hundred and forty-third, Green Bay and Mackinac Avenue. Community development black, black grant resolution number twenty twenty-three dash R dash zero zero four. A resolution for authorizing the execution of the Cook County Community Development Black Grant Program. Twenty twenty-three program year. Application for the village of Burnham.
Okay, so you make the motion, right? You make the motion. Now, do you have a second to pass this, um?
I'll second it.
Can't permit a block, but second by Trustee Cap will take the roll.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Our motion passed, thank you. Ready, Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Trustee Garcia. Trustee, Trustee Cap, I mean.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action on authorizing the payment of this month's bills. I'd like to make a motion to approve the payment of this month's bills.
There's a motion on the board by Trustee Cap to approve the bill first March, but we have a second, please?
Second.
We have given Trustee Richardson, I think he came out.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Our motion passed, thank you. Ready, Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Uh, public utilities, Trustee Richardson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As Trustee Greer mentioned, Cedar will be taking applications for assistance with electric, gas, and water on March eighteenth at the senior center from ten to four. And this is based on income, but you can come in and, uh, fill out an application, see if you qualify. Also, uh, March has been, um, the lowest in a long time for gas prices. Uh, the cost dipped below thirty cents a term for Chicago residents. So hopefully we'll all see a decrease in our gas bills next month.
Yeah, thank you, Trustee Richardson. Your report part of recreation, Trustee Hodges?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, I want to thank, uh, specifically Trustee Richardson, Trustee Greer, um, for, we had a, a low impact road day, Saturday, at the community center. They had fun. Uh, Trustee Greer, thank you for leading us out. Um, and running a little back and rope. I'm not good leading a couple of puts together, but you led them, and thank you guys so much. We're going to continue doing that. Um, we'll come up with another one, uh, at a later date coming up. Also, Sandwich, uh, community center is open now, and so if you want to go by there, check it out if you can. We're also kind of working with the mayor and the people over there at C N P D. So we can set up a day that we can go over there and do an actual tour and check out the different amenities that we can do with the village work there. The thing is, we pay taxes over to, to work over there, to work out over there. I want the people to go over there, check it out, and check out the prices and, and see if we can, uh, do some open shows over there. And so I want us to have that connection to Sandwich Community Center. So we're going to set up a tour, um, at a later date, and I'll let you guys know, uh, what's coming on with that. Um, also, uh, and also a couple of, a couple of, like, trustees brought their money for the cycling program.
Yes, it was great. Lost out.
See, yeah, yeah, we, we's working to make sure we get things going on so people can stay in shape we want to. As was, like, like we talked, we touched on a little bit today. That pathway will be a great pathway for our, our, our village. I'm looking forward to that. It's going to be really great. So again, if you have, you know, any type of classes you'd like to teach, let us know. If you want to volunteer, let me know. All right? That's all I got.
Thank you, Trustee Hodges, for that report and your information. And, uh, Trustee Hodges?
Excuse me, can I add something for the cap? Um, on the nineteenth of March, at Sandwich, they're offering a makeup class.
Okay.
So they're teaching you how to apply your makeup. And, um, I believe the time is from one to three, and you bring your own makeup. And they're supposed to have, like, uh, makeup artists who do makeup for celebrities, teaching the class, so. Oh, and as Trustee Greer said, the pool is open, but they're going to give us a date that Burnham residents can go through and do a tour.
We're setting up a tour there.
Yeah, we know, we know.
Yeah, but you more than welcome to go by there if the club is open. You go by there, you ask first the front desk, then you do a tour. I was trying to set up a date we all could go together, let them know that we Burnham, we here, y'all working with us. And so we want them to bring our, show our presence over there, but you guys are more than welcome to go by there.
And thank you, and, uh, and I would like to say also, that Trustee Hodges, you know, has done an excellent job.
Yeah, he has. Yeah, he has.
I was going to say, and he, I mean, he, he's done a better job historically than I did when I had it. Because he's like athletic with the kids, and so he really is, he really is. So, uh, I mean, I'm not exactly athletic, so I really couldn't teach him how to do that, so. But, uh, I mean, but he has done a good job, has been a, I mean, a plus and an inspiration to the community. We want to expand that, expand that, so, and, um, living in the picture. And I'm not just patting on the back, right here, yeah.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Also, um, I've been over to the gym when he was having the class. He's watched so many young men into, um, into the, uh, basketball court. And so it's, it's just great. And he works very well with the young men, and it's great. It is great.
Give me that, thank y'all so much, appreciate it.
All right. I've had a presentation, I've petitioned, then the communications, La Moria, Les Marques. Is there any unfinished business? New business, um?
Wait, I have a new business, I don't know. Has anyone noticed on the Calumet City side of the river south of Burnham? How it looks like they're, they created a landfill? Has anybody noticed, and what are they dumping? Like, there's a mound of dirt and it just keeps getting bigger.
Have they done a better bridge?
Where there used to be that company that would mine sand and put, like, stone and stuff in, in place of it. But lately, they've been burying something, and the mound of dirt keeps getting higher and higher. And it's much farther than I ever remember in the past. So the next time you go over the bridge, they're playing the next.
Yeah, it looked like it could be gravel, um, Franks.
A lot of dirt, though, right?
On that, um, place there.
Yeah, but it's a big mound of dirt there, too, that's, I don't know where they're getting all that dirt. They used to take sand out of there at one time.
Yeah, they took the whole, they numbered the whole, uh,
But it's dirt.
Lot back there.
It's like, it looks like almost like it could be a landfill. Where, like, burying something and covering it up with dirt.
I'll stop by there tomorrow and see if Frank was there, and she was.
Cause I was there in a couple summers ago, and I talked to the guy, but it looks totally different now. Like, all different equipment. Must have changed hands. But I don't remember seeing anything in the news about Kel City, you know, putting something new in over there. I know it's not in Burnham, but it's right across the other side of the river from us. Next time you're on the bridge, or take a peek and see what's going on, because it looks, it's real, the space is much bigger than it's ever been. And it's like a big mound of dirt.
Like a football field.
We have elevated, too, like way above.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I thank you. Um, but before we end this session, uh, we have to go into executive session. And as I've explained, it's never been before, we have certain issues pending the village, you know, for the termination of employees, or imminent litigation, anything of that nature, we have to go into executive session to discuss that. And so we will end this session, then we afford a back-up executive session. If you wish to stay and want to come back out, then we'll appreciate them joining the meeting at that time. Welcome to be a Gilan. Are you welcome to be the Gilan? So we have to go into executive session. So I will ask for motion to, um, close the regular order tonight.
I make a motion to close the regular order of the meeting.
Okay. That's the motion approved by Trustee Richardson to close this meeting this time.
I'll second it.
Second by Trustee Cap will take the roll.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Our motion passed. We have to go to executive session. If you're able to come back, let's see.